To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is special presentations with Dr. Brummett and myself.
So we'd like to invite Chris Wilson to the podium to present the CAE awards. And we'll go up there as well.
Hi, I'm Chris Wilson. Welcome Superintendent, Commissioners, Chairman. Sorry for being a little late. We have a board of finance meeting, so I'm rushing. You know what it's like at this time of the year. But I'm pleased to be here on behalf of CAE. I would like to thank you for your voice at CAE. As you join with the voices of others, it's essential for us as boards of education to have that committed voice, and without your voice, we would be less. I'm here this evening to recognize you for three awards of educational communications. These awards are for clarity of message, image, consistency, as well as readability, editing graphics, type format, and presentation. CAE has been honoring school districts with these awards for educational excellence since 1975. In 2016, the award was renamed in honor of a longtime CAE staff employee, Bonnie Carney, in recognition of her 47 years of dedication focusing on communications. The first award for your submission was concerning adult education and continuing education courses available to the public. The second was for communication with the local business community to expand and nurture school business partnerships. And finally, communicating Plainville's significant strides in eco-friendliness, energy conservation, and fiscal responsibility relative to your district's energy conservation program. By the way, as it was editorialized to me, the submissions were sent via email, not paper, in recognition of that. So, you know, I am here on behalf of CAE. I know how tight your meetings are. Being from Bristol, you know, we don't want to delay too much, but we certainly want to recognize you and congratulate you. I've been delivering these plaques for a few years on behalf of CAE, and I've never had the opportunity to deliver three plaques in one evening. So it's, I think it's a great honor. It's a great indication of the commitment that your administration, and your staff, and your school community has to these best practices, which really indicate what a great school district you are. So I'm pleased to provide you with these plaques on behalf of CAE. I don't know how you want to frame them all. But I just mean for this evening, so each can have one. How's that? Oh, if you have to. I don't want to ruin your photo.
Oh, no.
Lucky someone let me in. Okay, okay. Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck this year.
The next presentation is going to be the Everyday Hero Award. Tonight, we have two. The first Everyday Hero Award tonight is going to Denise Grodzicki. She was nominated by Faith and Taryn Emery. And here's what they wrote. "This year has not been the easiest for me," and these are a middle school student and her mom. "But the hardest was my mom's surgery. Being at home was difficult, but I thought being at school would be 10 times worse. I thought I wouldn't have the support I needed. I thought my studies would just make me more stressed and anxious, but when I went to school the day of her surgery, I felt more supported than ever. In health class, we were talking about death, grief, and suicide. That was my first class. Believe me when I say I didn't think I was going to make it to the end of the day, but I used my breathing strategies, got to go to Ms. Grodzicki's room, and calmed down. I truly felt protected there. I knew I was safe, and I could talk about whatever I needed to, and be supported however I needed to be supported. Whenever I'm having a problem, or any of my friends are having a problem, we know we can email her, or just go find her and be supported." Mrs. Grodzicki has always gone out of her way to support me, but this was the most scariest day of my life. She makes me feel less afraid, and she makes me realize I'm not alone. I'm not sure I'd be able to get through middle school without her." So that was the student. And this is the mom. "I honestly don't know where to start. Mrs. G was my son's guidance counselor years ago. He really struggled during his time at MSP. In his personal life, he was dealing with a great deal of trauma and loss, and in school, he was often bullied and had very few friends. Honestly, my husband and I were very concerned. This is when we were first introduced to Mrs. G. Not only did she offer Ray support and guidance, she helped him get through the hardest moments of his life. My biological mother died when Ray was in seventh grade, and I can tell you how many nights she stayed with me, offering condolences and tips how to help Ray and my family get through this difficult time. Ray often reminds me that he wouldn't have survived middle school without her and Mr. Goriano Snake." Fast forward six years, Ray is attending University of Hartford, and Faith is at MSP. Faith did not struggle like Ray, but has had her pre-teen moments. In addition to the girl issues that she had this year, and has dealt with some health issues and some anxiety around my surgery, once again, Mrs. G swooped in and saved the day. She has now provided both my children and my family with more love and support than I could ever repay. We are truly blessed to have her in our lives. Her dedication, hard work, and positive attitude should be recognized and appreciated." Come on up, Mrs. Grodzicki. Congratulations. That was quite a tribute. This same mom had another person that she wanted to acknowledge. And this next award goes to Sandy Cappadice. "This year, I have learned that our middle school nurse does much more than nursing. She has been such a support to our family. I've been able to reach out to her multiple times, and each time, she responds immediately and appropriately. Health has been a struggle for the women in our family this year. First Faith had some issues, and Ms. Cappadice made her office and herself accessible. Then I had some issues requiring open-heart surgery, and Ms. Cappadice went above and beyond, first assuring me that she had Faith covered, and sent me multiple reminders that she was thinking of us, praying for us, and all those related things. This kind of dedication and caring is much appreciated and should be recognized." Come on up, Mrs. Cappadice. Congratulations. And that does conclude the special presentations for this evening.
We will now go to the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve item A?
Motion to approve item A.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval passes. We'll go on to the citizens' comments, please.
I was waiting for them. Sorry. I thought somebody was getting a... Okay, all right. No citizens' comments. Consul liaison, Mrs. Pagliisi.
Good evening, Kathy Pagliisi, 50 West Broad Street. I have a few items you might be interested in, just as an update with what the council has been working on. The council recently approved the 2019 road paving program. The proposed list includes 25 streets that were last paved in the mid-1980s and early 1990s, so that's 30-plus years ago. As you know, we instituted a road paving program four years ago, and we're targeting the oldest, although that doesn't exclude some of the most needy streets that have heavy use, so we are continuing on with that program. Over the next several months, the town staff is going to be putting together a second five-year, $5 million road bond package for the town council's consideration. What that would mean is that the town council would be taking under consideration borrowing another $5 million to continue on this program. Most likely, if this gets through the process, would be put on the November election ballot, so we're moving forward. That would be $10 million that we have committed to improving our roads. As we all know, that probably won't take, and it certainly won't take care of all the roads that need help, but we're making some good progress on that end, so we'll probably continue to do that. The town council also approved last June $2.1 million to purchase two fire apparatus, namely, an engine pumper and the tower. Both of these purchases would replace fire trucks that are 25 to 30 years old. At the February 4th meeting, the council authorized spending $674,670 to purchase a pumper from Bulldog Fire Apparatus to replace Engine 2. Since then, the committee of the fire department has negotiated with the same company to purchase the tower replacements. The amount remaining to authorize the tower is $1,425,330. The fire truck committee is recommending $1,325,300 to purchase the tower. We did get somewhat of a discount in ordering both of these trucks at the same time through that particular vendor. There are not very many companies that build these types of equipment that we need, so both of them are being built through Bulldog Fire Apparatus. The first pumper will be the first one to go, which is in the building process right now, and the fire company has a committee which is working on the design and specifications for the tower, so that'll be coming in the next year or so. So we have moved those two projects along. The town council will also be hosting a public forum information session relative to valley water and the results of their recent report addressing water hardness and customer concerns. The event is scheduled for May 14, 2019, 7:00 p.m. at the middle school in Plainville. We are encouraging residents to attend. The water quality in Plainville has come under lots of scrutiny over many years, not just this past year. The water company did hire a company to do an in-depth study, mostly to discuss the hardness of our water. Our water is extremely hard, and that's due to the fact that it's well water. If you get your water from a reservoir, it's entirely different type of water, so the hardness can impact certain things, and some people are more sensitive to the hardness factor than others. However, we've asked the water company to come back, along with representatives from PURA, some of the state regulatory agencies, to visit us again, discuss the report, and perhaps come up with some recommendations as to what residents might be able to do individually to lessen the impact of the hard water on their houses. So it's a process we've been looking at for over a year, and I think they'll come up with some interesting information. We'll see where that goes. We also recently finished the work on the 2019-2020 budget, and we recommended it for a townwide vote on Tuesday, April 30, at the firehouse, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Just a very quick synopsis of where we ended up. The town government is going to increase 2.76 percent. The Board of Education will increase 2.7 percent. Our debt service will increase 7.6. Just as a note, the debt service, even though it's increasing by 7.6, we have a fund that's going to backfill those dollars which we have set aside, so our debt service reserve fund is going to help pay for that increase. For a total spending increase of 3.04 percent, the effect on the mill rate will be an increase of .88 mills, or 2.61 percent. So we did finish our work. It is now going, it is being sent out for our townwide vote, and we're encouraging everybody to please participate in that vote. It's an opportunity for our residents to let us know what they think of the spending plan, both for the Board of Education and for the town side. As we know, they're voted on separately. Since we've instituted this new method of voting on the budget, every budget has passed without any problem, and I anticipate the same will happen. So please encourage your neighbors, and friends, and people that you speak to to please come out and at least participate, whether pro or not. It is important, because this is our major spending plan for the upcoming fiscal year for both the Board and the town council. And that concludes my report. Unless anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, thank you.
Next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Brummett?
Thank you very much. I have asked Mr. Batchelder to join us this evening to give us an update on the Wheeler project. It continues to go along extremely smoothly. I was there today and got to see the connector starting to take form, looking at classrooms that are getting more and more finished on the other wing. We'll let Mr. B. tell us whether it's east or west. I can never keep that straight. But in speaking with Matt, our project manager, things continue to go along extremely smoothly, but I will let Mr. B. give us the particulars, but everything is on time, and he keeps assuring me that the preschool students moving back in December continues to be a strong reality, and I couldn't be more pleased with the project. And again, a thank you to Mr. Batchelder for the oversight, because this is like another full-time job that he has doing this. Mr. B.?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brummett. Thank you, members of the Board of Ed, for having me tonight. I'm happy to be here to update you on the project. I also want to thank all of you for your support throughout this project. It's been very helpful, and you all have been very supportive of the project. And I also want to thank Kathy Pagliisi, and pass along to the building committee, too. They've been very good listeners, very supportive, very collaborative, and very helpful, and they make it go a lot easier when we put items up that need changing and things like that, so please pass that along to them. If you remember last time I updated, you may recall, I had a little fancy gadget that I was pointing up there. It did absolutely no good, because you were all looking at that. So tonight, in an effort to learn from my mistake, I have my computer here, and thanks to Mr. Ross for helping me out, I'll guide you through some updates. So in front of you is a diagram of the school. In the areas in green, you'll see that that's the east wing. That's predominantly K1 and 2, and that's done. If you've been to Wheeler, seen it, you know, it really looks great. It's all done. Over this last April break, they've done some punch list that they're trying to accomplish and complete, so they're really just fine-tuning things, and it looks really good. Now, the bulk of the work has been in Phase 2, which is that dark blue area in the west wing, and that's predominantly grades 3 through 5. The new office area will be... Can you see my cursor moving around on your screens? Okay, the new office area will be right where it says, where it says "New Main Entry." That's going to be the new front of the building, and the office area is to the left of that, all right? And to the right of that, there's an OT, PT, and speech room, and the rest of these are classrooms, and you can see where the new corridor is, all right? And then you can also see some new restrooms that are there. That's being worked on right now, and they're moving along really, really fast and really well. We hope to get back in to that area by July 8. I'm really pushing to see if we can get teachers in there to, you know, unpack. We'll start moving all our stuff back over in that area, probably in the last couple days of school, but we have to wait till it's completely done to unpack and get it settled in. So we're hoping for July 8 to allow teachers to have flexibility over the summer to move in, either that, you know, starting July 8, and then, or even some teachers may want to do it at the end of July. But that's the goal. The big push that'll start, like, well, beginning with, if you look at 2B, that's the gymnasium. On May 13, it'll be the last day we can use the gym. And we have contingency set up for our PE teacher, Mr. Turkot, and how we're going to do that with kids, praying for good weather in the last few, the last month of school, mainly, but we have places to go inside to work with the kids while the gym is getting started. It has to get started now to get it done. So that's the gym. Starts May 13, and actually, May 14 will be the first day. And then where you see Sections 2A, that is the library, media center, that is the cafeteria, and also, there's a gang bathroom right next to, that begins in the west wing. It's right here, where my cursor is. And then there's another resource room, a special ed resource room. These are going to be combined into one room, but that, and the art room, too. But all that work in light blue will start the day school gets out. So they're really going to pump hard to get that all done by September before school starts, and they've assured us that they're going to get it done. I think it's in the contract to get it done, so it's got to get done. And they've been, you know, they're great to work with, and I should say that, too, that Matt Olshewski, he's the superintendent of the project. He's on the site every day from ONG. He's fantastic. He's fabulous to work with. And Castle Booze has been great, too. They've been very swift to respond to things, and they keep, and they try to work well together with ONG. So we hope to have that, all that blue area done by the start of school. And then that leads us to the last phase, which will begin September, the September 2019, and that's the phase in orange, all right? That's the south wing. And that is pretty much going to have, that's where our offices used to be, if you remember, when you come in, and the main entrance used to be right over here. The buses will still come in that way. That'll be the new bus route. But the south wing will consist of two pre-K classrooms, two new pre-K classrooms, right about over in here, and then most of our special ed resource rooms and our school psychologists, and also the staff room and the music room will be all in through here. So that's all going to get done between September of 2019, and hopefully be done by February 2020. Dr. Brummett and I are pushing to have those two preschool classrooms done and be ready to be occupied for a transition after the Christmas break. You know, they can't guarantee that right now, although today, we walked together with Matt Olshewski, and, you know, they feel pretty confident about it. They're reluctant to put 100% stamp of approval on it, and I don't blame them, but they're really trying hard. They know our goal and what we want to do to get our preschool kids back over before the second half of the year. So that's the scoop with the project in terms of updates around what's happening next. There's one other thing I can share, or a couple of things, actually, is you can see where this kitchen's starting on June 1. They have to start the kitchen even earlier, so, June 1, and I'll show you what that's going to look like. What's that? What'd I do? As long as I didn't do anything wrong. I'm concentrating up here. But Kev, this is not good. That's great, Kev. You know my learning style. It was simple. All right. So this is the cafeteria, and if you look, they have to start on January 1. They have to, this is where the kids go through the serving line typically, and they have to start all the work in the back there, where the cooks do the cooking. They've got to put all new equipment, everything, and they have to start that part first. So really, what we're going to do is, this is in the back of the cafeteria. If you stand at the entrance of the cafeteria and look to the back door, there's a storage closet in the back. This is where the new serving line will be, and you can see what it looks like, and the kids will come in through here and come around and exit out through here. And we'll have a whole procedure mapped out, but basically, Mike Koch, our food service director, will be working together with the cafeteria staff to have the food brought in every day, hot, and, you know, he's done this before, and he's assured us this will work fine. He's worked together, too, with Matt from ONG, and we're going to make that work for the last couple weeks of school. I'll probably staff that a little bit more for the last couple weeks of school to make sure it stays pretty organized, and look around to see how we can put more adults in there to make sure it's safe. The next thing I can share with you is, this is the beautiful courtyard. So if you haven't seen this already, this is what will be done by September 2019 also. And you can see, it's going to be a really nice place for teaching and learning. Those circles that are on the right and left side, and you can see, it looks like a little wall, that's going to be a sitting wall. And actually, Mr. White, you were here, and Crystal St. Lawrence was here for our Wheeler rounds recently, so you could see they already started the sitting wall there. They've already, they're already underway, so, yeah, they're doing a lot of work in there. But there's going to be birdhouses in there, and there's going to be, you know, those six tables you see are going to be steel with steel umbrellas, so they can last. The shrubbery in there, it's going to be a lot of artificial stuff, so it's low maintenance. The town won't be coming in there and cleaning, so we need to keep it low maintenance for custodian staff. All the green is turf, and the sidewalk is pretty much just sidewalk. But we're real excited about it. It's going to be a great place for teaching and learning, and we haven't had that before, so it'll be nice. The last thing I can share with you is just the outside. And it's going to take a second here. So this is the outside of Wheeler, what we'll have beginning of September 2019. Right now, at Wheeler, we use this whole field area, if you see my cursor flying around right here. That is where we mainly have our kids in grades 3 through 5 have recess. That, any day now, Matt is going to tell me that that's going to be dug up, and Mizzie Construction is going to be digging in there. And they're going to be digging all through this summer and all through next year, with the hopes to reoccupy that field permanently by April of 2020. By doing that now, and really getting all that piping done now, you know, we can get out there sooner rather than try to come up with alternative plans for seeding and stuff, and it just carries it out longer. But this is still more space than we've had in the past. To be very frank, I, you know, I feel like we're at the, we've climbed the big hump. We're on the down stretch, and the big major sacrifices are done at this point. But, you know, we won't have the field, but we'll have this gray, this is all pavement, and this is where the kids will be able to go to. This little, oh, what did I do? All right, this little orange thing, this is going to be cool, because while there'll be fences... be fencing all up around this orange thing, there'll be this one orange path that'll go, and it'll be like stone dust, and it'll go all the way around, so like Mr. Turkot and PE can do the mile run with the kids. You know, he's not without space, and that, that's important. The basketball court will be accessible from that little path. The grades three through five playscape, the new pieces that are going to be added to it will be accessible. The new K through two playscape, and the new pre-K playscape, which will all have fencing around it, will all be accessible as well. The courtyard will be done, and this is, again, how the school will look on the outside by September. And the new parking lot will be done, and we'll be coming up with a new pickup and drop-off procedure right through here, and as I said before, the buses will be coming through here. But they'll be entering, because this wing will be, being renovated, they'll be entering through here and be coming around here. But the connector, as Dr. Brumman was saying, is well underway. That has to be connected, even by the time anybody goes back in there this summer. So it'll be connected by the time school starts, but it should be connected around July, hopefully like by July 8th, to connect both sides. I think that's it. Let me look at my notes. Some of the, I will share with you some of the impacts on student and, and teaching and learning for the end of the year because of the gym are like, and, and overall out back is our field day, and that's a big tradition for us at Wheeler, and all three of the schools have a certain way they do field day. We have, we're going, I've organized a committee, and I've already been over to Norton Park, and I've already talked to the people at Park and Rec, and we're going to do our field day at Norton Park. We're pretty much going to have it on a 1:30 dismissal day, and we're going to have schools start and end at Norton Park. And we're just going to do and create a pickup and drop-off procedure there. And I'm, you know, the only thing I'm nervous about is everybody's going to like it better than Wheeler, because I think it's going to, I think it's going to be great when we, when we get it all organized. So that's exciting, to be able to still keep field day. The other thing is just our fifth grade promotional ceremony. We usually do that in the third to the last day of school. We won't have the gym to do that, so, again, that's one of those things, I'm hoping for good weather, because we plan to do it outside on the blacktop. But if not, we're going to do it, and it's going to be in the morning from 9:30 to 10:15, so we'll do the cafeteria if it's raining and be able to get it done before lunches start. So either way, that's going to happen. And the other things were just our music concerts, and we pushed them up. We usually have them in May, and we're just doing them a little earlier. I'm still confident the kids will sound great, so that's it. You have any questions for me? Yes?
I just have a question.
Sure.
The gym, is it going to be in the, is it going to be in the same spot, or you're putting it in a different area now?
No, it'll be in the same spot.
Oh, okay.
It'll be in the same location.
Is it going to be the same size, or are they going to make it bigger?
It's going to be the same size. They're putting up, they're adding a rock climbing wall and certain features, and they're getting rid of certain things that we, that aren't so good in there. We're going to have a good speaker system in there. We already have a good speaker system for music, we're going to have additional sound systems in there. There's a lot of stuff just up in the ceiling and lighting and, and just work that I can't speak too intelligently about, but it's work, and Sky Trust is going to be done.
Nice.
But yeah, it's in the same spot, and it's not getting really any bigger. Uh, Mr. Turkot's going to move his office, and it's going to actually be better for him and safer, because his office will be where a storage room was, which is very close, well, he'd be right where the kids are, rather than his office be outside of the gym.
Right.
So he can just have things closer to him and be with the kids. Not that he's ever not with the kids when his office is out there, but it'll just be better for him, so.
Right.
But it is the same size, to answer your question, the same spot, too.
Nice.
Yep.
Yeah, the entire school is the same square footage. The only additional square footage is the connector.
Yeah.
Because the state felt that the school was already the proper size, so no additional square footage.
Any other questions? Well, if you ever think of anything, feel free to email me, I'm happy to talk about it and answer your questions.
Thanks, good.
Thanks for having me.
Appreciate it. It was a lot of work on your part, Mr. B., which I really appreciate it, and I would agree that the Capitol Building Committee's been fabulous, and the board has been very supportive, so we're fortunate that everything is running right on schedule. I don't want to jinx anything, but that's what seems to be the case. So my second portion of my report this evening will be a discussion from Rosa Perez, our Director of Curriculum Instruction. She will be talking to you about a field work experience course proposal and the seal of biliteracy. So I will let her explain those two things. Thank you, Rosa.
Good evening to all. The reason that I'm here tonight is to seek your approval for two new endeavors for Plainville High School students. The first one is a new course called Field Work Experience, and this is a course that will carry credits, and it's basically an internship. Now with the new graduation requirements, we have the flexibility of adding courses that are going to encourage students to leave the walls of Plainville High School and seek opportunities outside of the classroom. The students will be able to engage into this internship-style course. They can earn one credit, .5 and .5, and each semester, and they can also do it again during their senior year. We're going to allow the students to look for opportunities, but if students are not able to find opportunities in the field work of their choice, then we will have a field work coordinator that will help them also reach out to businesses and different enterprises that will host them for this internship experience. We already have one, our athletic director is, has already received a request from one of the students who would like to be an athletic director someday, and he has already reached out to Mr. Farrell to have this experience. So we have already students who have expressed interest in doing internships in a variety of areas. The students will be required to work with the person, log the hours, do research in the career, work side by side with the person, and a course usually is 55 hours for half a credit, so that it is expected that the students will engage in activities in or above 55 hours each semester. So we're very excited to have this opportunity for the students, and we are hoping to have a list of students who are interested in the field work experience by the end of June. Any questions?
I know we've worked with Lynn Davis and Sue Bradley as well to reach out to our community partners, those have either attended the business breakfast a few weeks ago, and any of those folks that might be able to offer us internships, but I think this is a really exciting development for our students to get that field work really early on in their educational career. So thank you for putting it together, Rosa.
Yeah, definitely. Any experience, any hands-on experience with a career that a student can have is beneficial. Even if it doesn't work out, they have already discovered that that is not a path that they want to pursue, and then they will be encouraged to just seek other opportunities until they find something that they truly want and they want to pursue after graduation. So I think students are going to truly benefit, and they have 11th and 12th grade time, so they have four semesters in their high school career where they can engage in this field work experience.
So Rosa, there is kind of no limit as to how many students can participate in something like this, especially if they've found a place where they want to be embedded, correct?
Exactly, exactly. And, uh, some businesses and some students might, would, would like to continue, you know, so one semester, they feel that is not enough, and they might just continue for a second semester. So we are going to see how the students react to this. We already have a couple of students that will like to engage in this experience, and we're also going to learn from the students as we go, as to the needs and wants that they have throughout the years.
That's great.
If a student has, does one course and then decides this is not what they want, can they then, say, the next semester, take another, or?
Absolutely. That's why we broke it into semesters, so the students have the opportunity to just have one semester and change to a different experience or a different...
Or expand.
...field work the second semester.
That's great, thank you.
So it's great to know what you want to do, but even better to know what you don't want to do.
Exactly. And I mean, and when there is somebody in the field who is already experienced and is willing to give their time to mentor a student and to guide the student in the same path to discover and ask questions and, and show them firsthand what that career is all about, I think both sides are going to win.
That's great.
I have a question. And have the students come forward already to tell you what they are looking to seek out there?
Um, one, so far, that I know, one student has come forward and approached Mr. Farrell, and Mr. Farrell has already agreed that he is going to host a student for this work experience. We, Guidance Department is, after approval, then is going to actively advertise this to the students, and then we are going to communicate with the students the experiences that are out there. We're also encouraging the students to seek as well their own experiences, and also then we can increase the kind of partnerships that we have with the community as well.
Do we have any community members that have signed up for this? Are they aware that this is going to take place, and the students are going to be going out, or?
So far, the business partnerships that Lynn has created, they have expressed that they are willing to take students as work experience.
Okay. And is that only in Plainville, or is that in surrounding towns as well, or?
It could be surrounding towns, that the student has to be able to transport him or herself to the site as well. I mean, we're not going to be able to personally transport the students, but a lot of the students, if we look at the parking lot in Route 10, there's plenty of cars, so there will be plenty of students who will have transportation. And then we will just try to adjust their schedule, so they have, if they need to leave towards the end of the day early, they have the opportunity to do so, because they have met the requirements of the other academic courses.
Thank you.
So it's going to be very flexible, and we're going to work with the students, but we really would like them to have this experience prior to graduation.
Thank you.
Okay, the next opportunity is the opportunity to recognize the students at graduation. In 2017, the State Department of Education is, has been promoting the seal of biliteracy. Anyone would like to know what a biliteracy will be, or is?
I would like to know.
Does anybody know what biliteracy might mean?
Proficiency in more than one language.
Proficiency in more than one language. It is absolutely with pride that I present this to you, and we have created the guidelines for Plainville High School students to be able to be recognized at graduation and in their transcript for not only knowing English, but for also being proficient in another language. That language could be Spanish, French, Italian, or if there's any students who are studying other languages, like in Saturday School, we have some students that are studying German and Polish, that they also have the opportunity to be recognized at graduation. We also are going to have the opportunity to recognize those students whose first language is not English, and they have learned English as well. So it is an opportunity to recognize a variety of students that otherwise would have not been recognized. There's going to be standardized testing for students who are learning English to make sure that they have proficiency in reading, writing, uh, in English. They also take English courses, and they pass our English courses, and they earn credit. But we're also going to measure proficiency in a second language, English, I mean, Italian, Spanish. We can test in a variety of other languages, but there are some languages that we're not going to be able to test, for example, Urdu, or, um, languages that we do not have tests for yet, and then we will conduct interviews with the parents and with the students to see how they acquire the language. So once we determine students have proficiency in English in other languages, then we will, in their transcript and in their graduation diploma, put a seal of biliteracy. And you can see the seal there, but this is the purpose, and definitely, we are going to begin with our eighth graders, and we are going to be promoting the fact that learning a second language is to their benefit today, tomorrow, and in the future. So, but we are going to recognize the first group of students upon graduation in 2020. So that will be the first group of students who will earn the distinction. Employers are going to know that these students already have two different languages, because on their transcript, their seal will be there, and they also will have it in the diploma. And these are skills that will carry with them throughout life, and hopefully, the students continue the studies of languages beyond Plainville High School. But it is an opportunity to finally recognize the efforts of students for learning two or more languages. The World Language Department is going to manage the seal of biliteracy and to make sure that the students are proficient. And when I presented this to the World Language Department, Maria Colangelo, Italian teacher, said, "Well, I am going back to school because I want my seal." So they are all very excited, and of course, everybody says, "Well, I'm going back, too." And I said, "Well, I'm going back, too." So, but it is a great opportunity to recognize the efforts of students.
I did notice sign language is up there as well, which will be nice. We do have some students that are studying...
Yeah, it is a second language, and I am learning ASL as well.
You might have to give Rose an honorary seal of biliteracy, even if she doesn't want to go back to high school.
So, any questions? So it's all in your hands, two great opportunities for Plainville High School students.
Thank you, Rosa, those are both... Any questions? I'm very proud and pleased of these opportunities for our students. I think they're an awesome move forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and just want to make another mention of the Superintendent Showcase, which will be on Monday, April 29th, at 6:30 here at the high school. We start off in the auditorium with some brief opening remarks, and our state championship cheerleaders will do something amazing, and then we'll have a bunch of interactive displays here in the cafeterias with refreshments served by our students and preschool students doing a demonstration, literacy, NGSS, robotics. We have a lot planned, much more than that, and I hope everyone can attend. It's an awesome opportunity to be, for folks to be reminded of all the good things that happen in our schools, and it just so happens to be the day before the all-day budget vote, which is always a good time to think about these things. So, uh, parents would have received a school messenger from me not too long ago. Lynn Davis is going to do a press release this week, and I'll probably do another school messenger over the next week or so, and you'll probably see it on the electronic signboard, pretty much everything but a smoke signal. And we usually get a very nice turnout, because the students are front and center, they're doing singing, band, every, every opportunity to see the children in action. I think it's a very nice event. And with that, my report is concluded for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Brumman. Next, we'll go on to the board's subcommittees. Student representative.
Hi, everybody, it's just me tonight. Ally went on a college visit today and neglected to tell me, so I didn't know I was going to be alone until a couple hours ago, but that's okay. I'd first like to start off by saying that I'm very excited about that field work thing. I know I'll have graduated by the time that it happens, but the... I know I'll have graduated by the time that it happens, but the college that I'm attending in the fall has a big focus on what they call experiential learning. So I think this is a really fantastic way to get kids, you know, have them get their feet wet before they move on to college because there is a big focus on internships and getting involved in the real world before you go out so that you have that experience and you know what you're doing, not just a, you know, a diploma to show for it when you graduate college. So that's what I have to say about that. So my next thing is that April is a busy month for us, but I feel like I say that every time I'm here. But I learned today that we have less than 45 days until graduation. And going back into March a little bit, Ally and I went on a field trip with Dr. Brummett and some of the other board members to the Cave Day on the Hill, which was very insightful for us. We had a chance to learn about what's currently going on for public schools, what the plan is to modify and improve them in the future. I certainly learned a lot of things that I had no idea about before. March 21st was Mr. PHS. We had a very successful fundraiser and raised about $3,000. So it was a very fun night for all of us. Congratulations to everyone who participated once again. And March 28th, the World Language inducted their new members. Then the Thursday before, we had break. Normal National Alliance Society inducted its new members and gave its seniors their graduation cords, which was a bit of a bittersweet moment. I had to hand over my presidency, but I think that they'll be in great hands next year. Our super senior picture for the senior class will be taken next Tuesday, April 23rd, for everyone who's earned that privilege. The Interact Club will hold its annual senior citizen prom on the 25th in the cafeteria and the eighth grade open house and the superintendent showcase is April 29th, as we just learned. Moving on to sports, the track team will have their next meet tomorrow at home at 3:45 against Maloney. The baseball team is currently 1-4, but looking forward to the rest of the season to improve their record. And the softball team is 3-2, so they're off to a great start. The girls tennis team has only had one match. They were supposed to have another one today, but I don't know if you saw that downpour that we had about 2 o'clock today. The match got canceled, so they'll be looking forward to rescheduling that. It's a young team and I know that the girls are excited about working on their skills with some of the younger players to get them ready for the next seasons. Boys tennis team, 1-2 overall, and I have nothing to report on golf. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Madeline, we should just ask, what school are you gonna be going to?
I'll be starting at the University of New Haven in August.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, we go on to facilities. Mrs. Terrell.
We didn't have a meeting since our last.
Okay. And how about the policy subcommittee?
And policy, we had our meeting last month and we are, we have a list of policies here for second read that we'll be approving hopefully tonight.
Thank you. And next, finance subcommittee report. Mrs. Peterson.
The finance subcommittee just met and the board discussed the capital improvement plan in light of the cuts made on March 21st, 2019. During the meeting, a tentative plan was discussed that included using some of the 2018, 2019 capital improvement plan funds to offset the cuts made on March 21st, 2019. The board finance subcommittee will reconvene in May to continue this discussion. And that's all for now.
Next, we have the, oops, turf committee report. Dr. Brummett.
We didn't have an official turf committee meeting, but we did send out an electronic communication asking if the committee members were comfortable with us using $20,000 of the turf monies to allow us to afford the automated field lighting that was on the capital plan but was reduced. And there has been no objection, so we will be moving forward with using that turf money to do the automated field lighting, which will be a cost savings, allowing us, for folks that rent out the fields, to have those lights automatically turn on and off and not have to worry about keys and getting people all situated. I think it's gonna be a little positive addition to our turf field.
And the PAC liaison, Plainville High School, Foster.
The last, the last PAC meeting was on, on March 5th, was before our last board meeting, so there's not been a meeting since then. The next board meeting, PAC meeting is on May 8th. But on, just, I would like to personally thank those board members who did support the PAC by purchasing and I'm hopefully consuming the butter breads that they sold as a fundraiser.
PTO liaison for Tofflon, Mrs. Goncalvo.
The Lewis Tofflon Elementary School community will host a 50th birthday open house event on Friday, April 26th, according to Tofflon Principal Lynn Legault. And the open house will feature a walk down memory lane of the Tofflon School history from 1968 through 2018, along with classroom visits, a musical performance, door decorating, judging, and birthday cupcakes for everyone. The event will be held at the school from 6:00 PM until 7:30 and the event is open to the public. And that's it.
Thank you. And Mrs. St. Lawrence is not here. PTO liaison for Wheeler, Ms. Paul Mary. Oops, Kathy, I'm sorry. We'll get you next.
Okay. Wheeler has their meeting this Wednesday and Dr. Brummett will be there to talk about the budget, as far as I know. So that's all I have. Thank you.
And next, we'll go to Mrs. Wells.
The Linden PTO is plugging away at their fundraising. They recently earned $1,500 selling light bulbs. The book fair is coming up the week of April 22nd and they're also hosting a game show, which is a family trivia show on April 26th. And their Linden's Day celebration is coming up on April 23rd.
Thank you. Mrs. Terrell, Crick Council report.
I did not attend the last meeting of the Crick Council. Next meeting is actually Wednesday, this Wednesday.
Okay. And next is the chair's report, which of course, we're talking about the budget. We all know that this has been approved by the town council and the next step will be the all-day vote on April 30th. We can't just tell you about that enough. Also, we, I attended an event at the Historical Center that was given by Rosemary and it was Plainville women leading the way. I never realized the amount of women that were in charge of different, what do I want to say, different activities, no, no, no councils, such as Mrs. Pagliisi and myself and just the amount of women that are out there that are just leading the way for this in Plainville. It was, Rosemary was awesome with us. She had so much information that brought us back to the beginning of Plainville, how everything got started, to where we are today and how we've progressed as well. Very, very interesting, very shocking, and I was in awe. That's all I have with that. And congratulations to the second quarter honor roll students, read a newspaper, awesome for them. Thank you so much for all that they get from the teachers and all that help them. And that's the only report I have today. Unfinished business. May I get a motion to remove items A through H from the table?
Madam Chairman, I move that we remove items A through H from the table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Going on to new business, may I get a motion to approve item C, new course proposal, field work experience?
We have to, we should, we should actually approve items A through H to remove from the table. So I would move that we approve items A through H.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, unfinished business, may I get a, a motion to approve item C?
Motion to approve item C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Was this the, I'm sorry.
All in favor? Did everybody?
Well, was this, is this the request for approval for the coursework for a field, field work experience? Is that what you're talking?
Yes, sir.
So you have a motion and a second? Did you move from, somehow another mistake? I just, I just wanted to mention that the one thing that we didn't talk about when these proposals came up is that there's virtually almost no cost to doing these things. They're very minimal cost to, you know, to create these new opportunities for students. So I just wanted to mention that before we.
The three-year cost to add the fieldwork experience is $2,100 in a total three-year cost. I mean, that is gonna have such a benefit for the students in this school that I just think, I'm amazed that we can do it for that low a cost. I just think that's phenomenal. And I urge its, its adoption.
Can I just get some clarification on where we are? Because did we skip things?
No, I think we're in the.
We're under new business.
We're on new business. Item C.
Section C.
We did skip item D.
We didn't do Board Open Forum, the Quarterly Special Education Cost Report.
Go back to new business, Board Open Forum. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to say?
I would just like to encourage everyone to go out and vote for the budget on April 30th.
Anybody else?
Just, I know Madeline mentioned it, but we did go to the Day on the Hill that Cave sponsors and it was, was interesting to listen to the new chair people of the Education Committee and their, they do seem to be working more collaboratively and each one of them has some experience in either school administration or having been a previous school board member, which is not always the case, so this was really kind of a nice thing. So there was a little bit of hope there. And also wanted to mention Family Fest is coming up, May 11th. I can't, when our last board, when our next board meeting is, but, so Family Fest, Foster's gonna help me describe this, right?
Sure, I can help too.
Well, yes, Maureen, Maureen, you describe it, because you'd do a better job than me.
It's a coordinated by the Family Resource Center, Donna Cavallaro and her team. This is our, probably our sixth or seventh annual. It'll be at Linden Street School. They moved the location about a year ago and it was a very much a positive move. And so it's indoor or outdoor, rain or shine, and there's going to be touch a truck, food trucks, I think a princess may be swinging by. And, you know, overall, a great free activity for all children, you know, of all school age children, especially the elementary age. And every year, they add a few new features. I might not know all of them, but it is, it's well worth everyone's time and it's a free, great way to spend the day with your children.
So they have also, they're giving away books to kids that come. There's some raffles, like a door, you know, a door prize kind of raffles, doesn't cost anything. A lot of the community members there that are, have things that pertain to children, whether it's an activity or something that you might be interested in. It's a really nice event. It is well attended and actually, a lot of people from out of town come, but, you know, that's fine too. I just, I just want to mention it because it is, Foster and I are working on the committee.
Also, just because they can't let this pass, the high school jazz band will also be there.
That's right.
And, and there'll be other forms of entertainment. I think there's gonna be a magician that is gonna be working on both magic, but also teaching at the same time, pretty much on, working on the ecology. So it's, it's really gonna be a fun day. Starts at 10:30 in, in, in the morning. It will be outside unless we have an event like we had last year where it was quickly because of rain moved inside, but the, the plan is to have it 90% of it outside.
Where's it gonna be located?
At Linden Street School.
This Quarterly Special Education Cost Report, Ms. Al.
So you asked me once a quarter to report on special education. The reason we do it is because there can be large fluctuations that can really impact our budget and so you're wise to keep an eye on it. What we can report tonight is that we're very close, our forecast is very close to budget. Within, when, when we wrote this report up, we were within about $4,000 to budget. As I said, things change fast. Since we put this report together, we found out our excess cost reimbursement, which was $24,000, unfavorable to what we expected, but at the same time, we learned that our choice reimbursement for special education would pretty much offset that. So we're pretty much back to about the same place within, within the magnitude of error that we can report right now. We're, we're very close to budget on special ed tuition. That's it.
Thank you. May I, new business, may I get a motion to approve item C, new course proposal, field experience? Motion?
Motion to approve our request for approval of the new course, field work experience.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I get a, a motion to approve item D to allow Plainville High School Principal to affix the Connecticut State Seal of Biliteracy to Plainville High School diplomas as appropriate?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the request approval of the Connecticut State Seal of Biliteracy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I get a motion to approve item, oops, wait a minute, did I, wait a minute, I missed D. Hold on. Nope, D. Okay. May I get a?
Motion to approve.
Item E to approve.
Yeah, participation in the Healthy Food and Beverage Certification and Initiative. And this is a motion that requires kind of like three parts, as you can see. One is that we would, we would vote to participate, one vote for the exception for foods and the other exception for beverages. So I don't know if you want to do it in three parts or do it all in one, if else we?
Can we do it all in one?
Proposed motion is all in one. It's, yeah.
Cool. I think we just say we, we would, would vote in favor of the proposed motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I would just say that that Healthy Food Certification allows us, I think you saw the documentation that they gave us. I think it was $16,000 last year to comes back to the food service program. Food service program should be self-sufficient. If it's not, the Board of Education has to cover the costs, right? So we want it to be self-sufficient. So it's really important that we participate in Healthy Food Certification and, and give our, you know, food service as much dollars as they can.
Okay. Request, oh, we did that one, we're done.
I think we're on the consent again.
Yes, we are. Unless there is a concern, may I get a motion to approve the consent, the consent agenda as presented?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I can second that, but I would just like to mention that it does say that graduation is gonna be held on Tuesday, June 19th. 18?
18.
Okay. How's that?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn? Are we there or did we, did I miss something?
Madam Chair, I just have one question, clarification. Under unfinished business, we did the motion to remove from table, but do we actually do the motion to approve it?
Yes.
We did. Okay, I missed that, sorry.
So now, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night, everybody.